Welcome. We are, good evening, everyone. We are live. Um, thank you so much for joining us at the Hillsborough County Council PTA, PTA and A School Board Candidate Forum. With us this evening. Alrighty, welcome.
Oh no.
We are, good evening, everyone. We are live. Um, thank you so much for joining us at the Hillsborough County Council PTA, PTA and A School Board Candidate Forum. Remember, this is my first time.
Evening, bear with me.
There we go. Karen Perez is here. Awesome. So with us this evening are candidates for school board in District Two, Four and Six. Damaris Allen, Hunter Gambrell, Danielle Smalley, Ally Marie Legge, and Karen Perez. All candidates were invited to participate and Stacy Han, Patty Rendon and Roshan Gandret were unavailable. I am Amy Marie Granger Welch. I am the President of Hillsborough County Council PTA. Our county council PTA supports local unit PTAs and we provide training, help with compliance, guidance on audits and all types of financial matters advocacy and education. We have several great events coming up, including our fall training and everyone is invited to attend that. Um, before we begin, I would like to remind you that PTA is an all partisan organization. We do not endorse or make recommendations of any of our candidates. The purpose of our candidate forum is to inform you, the public, about the candidates and their positions. We're going to start with introductions from the candidates. Each candidate will have ninety seconds to introduce themselves, their backgrounds and why they are running for school board. We're going to start with Karen Perez, who is only available for thirty minutes due to a prior commitment. And then move alphabetically through the others. Candidates will be introduced in alphabetical order by last name. However, when we move on to the next round of questioning, whoever previously answered the question first will become last. Um, candidates, please introduce yourselves, provide your background and why you're running for school board. And welcome Karen, you are first, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Karen Perez. I am currently the sitting board member in District Six, countywide. I am looking to run for office to continue the work that I have started. And you know, with mental health, um, at a crisis level, I would like to continue bringing those funds to the district. And um, working with our students. I also um, um, started, um, you know, um, really rallied around getting a, um, a survey started for um, our students who are bust across, um, you know, the district. And how that's affecting them, um, both in their grades and also mentally. And um, that survey will be completed around September, October. And um, I'm looking forward to seeing how that, what that survey provides us. But how um, we can work to get the students back on track with, given the, the outcome of that survey.
Thank you. Alright, Damaris.
Hi, my name is Damaris Allen and I'm running for Hillsborough County School Board District Two, which is South Tampa, down around to Apollo Beach, River, uh, Ruskin and a little bit into Riverview, Brandon and downtown Tampa. Um, I, I have over a decade of experience advocating for students, families, parents, teachers, and our public schools in general. I started as the president of a Grady Elementary School PTA, where I really just wanted to turn the school around. I noticed that a lot of people were choicing out or opting out of going to our local public school and I decided I wanted to change that. So I worked with volunteers and teachers and the administration and we got to work to make that school is now the, the number one rated school in Hillsborough County. And that's because of years and years of parents and teachers and admin working together to make that happen. I served as president of Hillsborough County PTA. I serve on the Florida PTA Legislative Committee. So I've literally read every little piece of legislation that impacts children and families. Um, that has come across the desks of our legislators in the last five years. And I'm running because I know that I can use my vast knowledge of policy of our community, my engagement in the community and involvement in our community to make a difference in our schools. I know it because I've done it before and I, I plan to do it again. Thank you.
Awesome. Hunter, you're up.
Hi, I'm Hunter Gambrell and I'm running for the District Four seat on the Hillsborough County School Board, which covers the eastern part of Hillsborough County from Plant City all the way down to Wyomama and over to the southern part of Ruskin, um, over to the Bay. Um, I'm a fifth generation, eastern Hillsborough County resident. Uh, my family grew up in the Cork area. I graduated from Plant City High School in two thousand and five. From there, I went on to HCC. Before I, um, before I studied business administration and graduated from the University of Florida Go Gators. Um, I've also worked for Hillsborough County Schools. I've been in education for the past sixteen years. I, I started out in Hillsborough County at Plant City High School as a, as an ESE aide in the classroom. From there, I went to Valrico and Buckhorn Elementary School where I was an IEP assistant. I went to the Transportation Department as a funding analyst. Uh, making sure that we're getting the revenue that we're supposed to locally. Um, I went to the migrant education office after that to work for the Florida Pass Program, which was a, a way to get students caught up on credits that, uh, that are migratory. And then from there, my wife joined the Navy and uh, we were stationed out in San Diego. I, I was, I worked for the largest elementary school district out and um, in California. It was a Chulavist Elementary School Districts and I rose up to be the Associate Director of Transportation. So I have had multi-faceted jobs. I'm currently the um, Senior Coordinator of Workforce Operations for the Pope County Public School System. And there I am in charge of getting current technical education programs off the ground um, at our local schools. Um, I'm running because when it came time to put my daughter in a school, I, I looked around at my, my beautiful city that was once so proud of all the A schools that we had and, and I noticed that we, we had no more A schools. And two thousand and nine, Plant City had fourteen. And then if you fast forward ten years, uh, later to twenty nineteen, before the pandemic, and we have none. And the reason why we have none is because our resources are not put where they should be. And that's why I'm running. I'm, I'm running to make sure that we get the resources where they're needed. And every child, including those in our marginalized communities, has a right to, uh, to, to graduate college or career ready and have the same, um, the same aspirations as everyone else. Um, and I'm looking forward tonight to, uh, talking about my, my plan for rejuvenated Hillsborough County Schools. Thank you.
Alright. Ally Marie, you're up.
Hi, I'm Ally Legg and I am running for Hillsborough County School Board, countywide, which means everyone in Hillsborough County can vote as long as you're registered. Um, and I'm a veteran. I'm a mom of five. Um, and I have been a parent educator for, for a long time. Obviously, my fourteen, uh, my oldest is fourteen. We have fourteen, twelve, eight, six and four. Um, and a parent is a child's first educator. We teach them literally everything they need to know before they walk through the doors of a school and throughout their life. Um, they are why I'm running and not just for them, but for the education of their peers. Um, over the last several years, uh, I want to say about six years, I've been an advocate, uh, not just here in Hillsborough County, not just the state of Florida, but nationally for parental rights, religious, medical and educational freedom, advocating for children with special needs, as I have one. Um, and for children that are medically complex and making sure that our inherent God-given rights are not stripped away through legislature. I've also been teaching families across our nation how to build lasting relationships with their locally elected representatives and the proper role of government and the proper role of their office in order to properly hold them accountable for what they do because their actions affect us personally on a local level. Um, and that is very important. What I want to do, um, when I get on the board is I just want to make sure that our children have a back-to-basics education. We have over eighty years of educational experience on our school board and we still have the same problems we've had for the last ten years. Obviously, something's not working and we need someone on the board that is going to take a good, hard look at it, explain it to the people because we are a government run by we the people, for the people, by the people. And that's how it needs to be. Um, our budget definitely needs to be looked at and our teachers need to be paid more. They need to be valued and our parents and our students need to be empowered. And that is exactly what I plan to do when I sit on that board. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Um, Danielle, you're up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Danielle Smalley, candidate for Hillsborough County School Board District Four. I am so excited about the opportunity to not only just work, uh, in this board, but work for educators, work for families and work for students. It's what I have pledged my life's work to, um, even working in counseling with students or that have been imprisoned or currently imprisoned. I was a Title One, um, teacher throughout the Tampa Bay area and am currently a principal in the charter school. So I realize that there are aspects of both sides. Um, there are families who cannot, um, adequately have their child in a public school and need other options. So I am open to making sure that children's and families have the best options available to what works for their household, what works best for them, as well as advocating firmly um, for teachers and for their ability to have autonomy in the classroom and the ability to work in a way uh, that is the best fashion for themselves, for their teachers and for, uh, their students as well as the school body holistically. So I am for the family, but first, uh, for the child and making sure that the children receive what they need. If that might be emotionally, behaviorally and definitely academically. That's what we do in education. It is for the well-roundedness of the child and ensuring that we're able to produce children who are able to thrive not only for themselves, but enabled to impact our society. So yeah, that's me. Hi.
Thank you so much. Um, we're going to get on to our questions. Um, Karen, we're going to let you go first because we know you have to get off real quick. Um, so I'm going to start with first question. Here we go. Uh, what do you believe are the core causes of the financial problems that our district faces? And what would you do to improve the financial situation of the district?
So this has been one of the sentiments that I have echoed since I was elected. And one of the causes, I believe, um, is that we have contracts that are reoccurring, that we don't look at in order to, to scrub those contracts to see if they're still needed. Um, and they're a million dollar contracts. And, uh, in order to move those contracts over to areas that are still needed or even move them away, um, and do away with them. Um, and the, and the lack of transparency. Um, I've been one of those board members who, um, take my, um, conversation to the sunshine. Um, because having these conversations about the finances, um, behind closed doors, it doesn't allow the public to see, um, the concerns that I have or the possibility of allowing that conversation to happen in sunshine. So there are certain contracts now that the new, um, the new financial, um, um, staff is starting to, take away and they're starting to look at and, um, with a very discerning eye. Um, and that is why a lot of, um, the, the, the budget now is in the black and is starting to look better. But we have to do a better and a more diligent, um, move with that. Um, because I feel that, um, doing with a continuous job with that will help us keep, um, the budget for the teachers at a place that we could continue giving them the steps that they need and require. And also for us to get, um, the teachers here in Hillsborough County that we need, but also maintain them at a, um, at a salary that will, um, attract teachers here to Hillsborough County.
Thank you so much. Um, we're going to start with Danielle next. You're up. Would you like me to repeat, repeat the question, Danielle?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Okay. What do you believe are the core causes of the financial problems that our district faces? What would you do to improve the financial situation of the district?
Awesome. Thank you, um, for your kind of question. I believe first, it has been inadequate spending, um, misappropriated in different places that, as Ms. Perez spoke about contracts, uh, that are just on a continual loop without reevaluating or reassessing where that money is going and who it's going to or what it's being dispersed for. So actually taking a firm look at to how to redistribute funding. Uh, a lot of Hillsborough County sometimes is very top-heavy. We have a lot of people in district offices, um, that are paid out these salaries, um, that don't trickle down into, uh, the lower level of the schools that actually need them. So I think revisiting what the budget actually allows, puts forth and then, um, making sure that we reevaluate that the spending makes sense. Um, a lot of the grants that we had before, we no longer have. So making sure that we're sustainable without even having, uh, those other funding sources that we're able to survive as well as make sure that we can have, um, salary increases, not just for teachers, but for the staff um, across the board as well as, um, ensuring that we are taking care of our Title One schools um, that need funding as well as other school areas in our ESE, um, areas that need more funding and more, um, support in those, uh, opportunities. So I think re-allocating the budget and making sure that it is not just, um, reviewed by those on the board, but those outside, um, outside people, actually outside voices, parents in the community being able to see where the money is going, um, so that they are able to, um, participate in that process. So workshopping as well as a part of the solution.
Thank you. Ally Marie, you're up.
Okay, hi. Um, so there are a few issues, uh, that are plaguing our schools when it comes to financials. Um, there, I know that we are, we are pretty top-heavy. We have several positions that are, you know, downtown Rosack that, um, are getting like six-figure pay while our teachers are, are struggling to make ends meet. Um, I know that we do need to revise some contracts. We need to make sure that we are getting the best bang for our buck, the best return on investment. Uh, we also need to make sure that there's an interface between hiring and a salary. Right now, there's no interface. You can hire us, you have units that you have to hire, but you don't know how much you're hiring them at. And that's a problem. We also need to make sure that, um, we're not spending an astronomical amount of money on certain products because we think they're the best. We have to actually do some research and make some, you know, difficult choices i- in order for us to make sure that we're spending our money the way, um, it is intended and, and how it's intended. But also being transparent, extremely transparent with the people because it's, it's their money. It's not coming from some bank offshore somewhere. It is the people's money and we need to be responsible with it because it's hard-earned money. Uh, and just making sure that we can explain it to the person, uh, to, to the people in layman's terms where they can understand the process, um, and how that works, I think is most important, engaging the public. But also making sure that, uh, we are trimming the fat, no matter, no matter what the difficult decision is. We need people to do that.
Thank you. Hunter, it is your turn.
Thank you. Um, we are at a crisis point with our, with our budget. That's without a doubt. Um, and everything that was mentioned before, contracts and community conversation with the parents, so they actually understand the budget are absolutely critical. But the other thing that hasn't been mentioned before is we have to hold the state's feet to the fire. Um, what we see now is a, a state that does not pay us what, what our teachers deserve. And they just keep putting measures out there that create animosity, um, between our teachers, including some of the, uh, pay structures. Um, the fifteen dollar an hour wage that the governor, uh, wanted to vote against before, but now he's pushing all the school districts to rapidly push that fifteen dollar an hour thing out this, this, uh, year. And so what he's doing by that is, is really it's creating division. We shouldn't, educators should not have to wait and hold their breath every year to wait on a contract to be ratified after the school year starts. We should know the game rules and the compensation beforehand. So that's something we can work on internally, but we also have to work with our state leaders on making sure that the correct appropriations are given to our district. Uh, currently, we, in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, the Transportation Department spent sixty-seven million dollars in Hillsborough County. That's on new bus purchases, fuel, um, salaries, everything, administrative costs, all that, sixty-seven million dollars. The state gave us back roughly thirty. Um, so we have twenty-seven million dollars sitting out there that has to come from the general fund and that's coming from where millage dollars are going and everything like that. That's where that money comes from. So as our, our, our Florida retirement system contributions go up, as our medical costs go up, we have to do a better job of holding the state's feet to the fire and being more transparent with our taxpayers.
Thank you. Uh, Damaris, your turn.
So it's easygoing loss because then you get to echo everybody else that just went, right? I, I think we do need to do a better job of looking at contracts, especially when it comes to the multitude of computer programs that our kids are using. They're really expensive and not everyone uses them. Um, a- and, and that's, it's, our contracts are not just limited to that. I think we need to work on transparency. That's one of the reasons that I brought back the idea from the Miami-Dade, um, uh, school, school district to create a financial advisory committee. I immediately went to the then-chair, uh, Lynn Gray and then, um, and also Addison Davis and said, we need this. We need community members to be able to come to an open meeting, to look at our budget, to understand our budget so that they can go back to their communities and share what they have learned. Because the more people that have eyes on the budget, the better off we are, right? Because there's a lot of misinformation out there. And then I also think we need to hold legislators' feet to the fire, like Hunter said. That is absolutely true. We are, we, we consistently hear these narratives that there's record spending. Well, you, one year we added thirty-two cents, thirty-two cents to each kid's, uh, to each allotment. And that was considered record because it was thirty-two more cents than the year before, right? And so I think it's really important to fact-check the narratives that are coming out and that, and, and that, that gets us in a better place. Um, and, and we need to look at the top-down issues, right? We need to prioritize the people who are you, working directly with our kids every single day. I, I said it this morning and I'll say it again. I wish that we would have prioritized taking care of the key teachers' contracts over taking care of Addison Davis's contract. Because Addison Davis cannot teach two hundred and twenty thousand kids. Only teachers can. And so it seems like we have our priorities a little backwards and we really need to, to focus on the people who are impacting our kids every day. Because when our teachers don't, our, we, our kids don't have a qualified teacher in their classroom, they're the ones that suffer. Our communities suffer. Our futures suffer.
Thank you. Alrighty, so we're going to move on to the second question and we will start with Ally Marie. Alright, so the district currently has S R money to address mental health. However, that money will go away at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. What do you plan to do to help the district advocate for the mental health dollars? And how would you allocate those mental health dollars within the district?
So I know that we need to, uh, we're struggling right now with getting, uh, psychologists and clinical social workers into our schools because we have so many vacancies with that. And that is something that I would advocate for. I know that we need it. Um, we have the, the deficit of, of mental health illness, uh, going around in our schools directly related to policy. Uh, when they close everything down in two thousand and twenty, it had a reverse effect on our children, uh, their mental health, their emotional health, um, their wellbeing. And it, it's, it's very disheartening seeing that, especially when you have children that never experienced those things before. Um, and now that they have and they're, they really don't have an outlet. Most, most parents, um, and most families cannot afford to send their children to see a psychologist or, or a social worker. So that's very important. Um, and I, and when it does go away, I will definitely do my, my due diligence with, um, leveraging the relationships that I have built over the last, um, six years with legislators um, to advocate for, for more funding for that specifically. I think it is, it's important and we need it.
Thank you. Hunter? Your turn.
Awesome. So, uh, we have seen that the, the S R funds and everything have been used for mental health and it's critically important, as Ally said, that we see our children suffering, um, especially during the shutdown and then coming back and not knowing um, how everything worked. I, I know a pair, set of twins that have, uh, had a really hard time in adjusting because their kindergarten years, the year that it got shut down. So they didn't get the field trips or anything like that. And it's, our kids e- expect those things and we get them, you know, rushed up, but we, we get them pushed up against it or we get them, uh, riled up, you know, to go on field trips and everything like that. And then not to be able to do it, it's very disheartening. But a- as far as mental health dollars go, it, it is critical. We do see that, uh, uh, resources really need to be expended in a better way. And we really need to have MTSS support out there in our schools that, uh, that need a little bit more help. Um, what we see right now is, is teachers, um, asking for MTSS help, uh, when students are in crisis and sometimes they're not getting the help that they need. And so we have to do a better job of making sure that our resources are available uh, to be put where schools are having crises at. And I would make sure, um, that, like Ally said, that we work with our partners at the state level to make sure that allocation is made after these S R dollars run out to, to continue the, the fight against mental health problems in here in Hillsborough County.
Thank you. Damaris? You're up.
So I think it's important to recognize that this isn't just about mo- losing things after the pandemic, right? Or we have all gone through a collective trauma. And I think until we're ready to recognize that, we're not going to be able to move forward, right? We, we look at it like, oh, this thing's got closed down and it was hard. But it's not just that, right? We, we're incredibly divided. It's incredibly challenging. Our kids had to adjust to a new normal and then it's a new normal again and everything went back to normal. Um, without any recognition of, oh, maybe this was difficult for us. In addition to that, we, we often have unfunded mandates when it comes to mental health. Uh, we are, our counselors spend the major, especially in our high schools, spend the majority of time doing schedules and things like that. They aren't available to counsel kids. We're nowhere near the industry standard. We, instead of having one to every two hundred and fifty, we have about one to every six hundred kid. How is one counselor ever even going to share the services that are offered with one to every six hundred kid, the kids? It's also important to, uh, in this instance also, we also need to hold our, our state leaders' feet to the fire. A couple of years ago, we were ranked fifty-first in mental health spending. And that's really important to recognize that we haven't prioritized this as a state. And if you want to know where we put our priorities, we look at our budget, right? Because budgets are, are ultimately moral documents. And so if you really believe in funding mental health, if you really believe in funding education, if you really believe in taking care of kids, then those are going to be at the top of our budget and they are now. And so what I would do to advocate is I would continue doing what I'm doing right now. I would go, uh, go meet with legislators, talk with them on a state level, um, fight with, uh, you know, I'm one of the people who will help fight to get our S R funds given to us because that was being held for a very long time. Um, and so we, we need to make sure that we have access to those funds, even when they're given down from a federal level too.
Thank you. Uh, Danielle, you're up.
The first step in this process is making sure that the family, uh, is first aware because they're our first, uh, signal of what we're able to even do in a school system. There are many times I've conquered or, or been with a child, I'm sorry, confronted a child who's been having issues, um, but the family isn't aware of these issues or the problems. So I think first, bringing family awareness. Um, so to, could, to elongate the system, we need to make sure that families are aware of what these triggers are, especially as far as anxiety. Um, and as we build that awareness, also making the state aware that it isn't just a school problem, it's an everywhere problem. And in that, um, continue to advocate, um, Mr. Campbell said about MTSS. If you don't know, that's a multi-tiered systems of support. So actually putting in the systems that are able to be able to, um, advocate for children. Uh, my school partners was Northside. We have a contract that if we aren't able to service a child with anxiety, that we're able to send them somewhere. Um, so places like Northside, Grace Point, the Crisis Center, um, which we all visited, making the door open for those facilities to come in, as well as advocating families to go to them for support. So even when, um, these S R funds are, uh, expended, then our next route is to make sure our state officials know that, um, this is a grave issue and an area of firm concern, but it's also an issue that needs partnership with families and definitely the schools. Because if a household doesn't know what's happening, definitely we know what's happening at school. Um, so that way we're able to not only empower teachers, but also empower staff to know how to best help and support children.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to question three. Um, Hunter, you're going to go first this time. If the district decides to solve the teacher vacancy crisis by simply eliminating the teacher vacancies and making schools teach with the resources that they have, what would your approach be as a member of the school board?
So if our, if our schools had to just teach with what they have, they would be sorely, um, i- it's going to be inadequate. We have nine hundred instructional vacancies right now. Um, nine hundred instructional vacancies i- is incredibly crazy. That's nine hundred classrooms with at least eighteen children and them that, that won't have a certified teacher in front of them at the beginning of school. And now we're shutting down, the district's shutting down because of, you know, the impasse and, and some of the, uh, issues revolving around these nine hundred vacancies. The district's now shutting down whole departments in ESE and putting those people in schools, at least through the twentieth day count. So how can we ever get our, our ESE students tested? How can we get related services started for them if, if we're shutting down whole departments just to cover schools? The first thing that the district must do is work on the retention of the staff that they have. And that's giving them their two percent, their two, two steps back, the, the thing that they're supposed to have, the thing that was promised to them years ago. Um, nobody in their right mind in the private sector would work without a raise for five years. It just wouldn't happen. And we can't expect that our teachers would either. So that's the first thing that we have to do before we start recruiting more people is we have to start working on the retention that we currently have.
Thank you. Damaris?
Can I, can I get a clarifying question? Did you say if it happens when I'm a school board member or if it happens in general? Does that makes a difference in my answer?
If the district decides to solve the teacher vacancy crisis by simply eliminating the teacher vacancies and making schools teach with the resources that they have, what would your approach be as a member of the school board?
Thank you. Um, so one I would, I would, I would bring up the issues that it's going to have for our kids, right? Uh, and that's, that's, that's really what's going to happen is we're going to see our kids lo- lose out on having opportunities to take classes that they might not be able to take. We're going to see class sizes maximize. We're going to see some schools lose certain AP classes like we did last time, right? We're going to lose maybe AP Latin, maybe you're going to use, lose APUSH because you only- We're going to lose maybe A P Latin, maybe you're going to use, lose A push because you only ha- have. You know, just a few kids that want to take it in the class. You're going to lose out on all of these services that make schools great. We're going to see bands go away. We're going to see orchestras go away. We're going to see theater classes going away and and the arts are what drive achievement in math and science. So it's really important to recognize that they're, they're, they're valuable in themselves, but they also are valuable for. The extra benefits that come with having those things. And so. You know, I, I would fight with everything that I could to make sure that that wouldn't happen. I am very concerned because. I wouldn't be shocked if this is the direction that we would head, uh, uh, head in. And I'm, uh, and and. And I, the only people that suffer are our kids, right? And 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 I just think about my kids who have had access to all of these things that have set them up for success as they go into college. And I cannot tolerate that for other people's kids, right? If it's not good enough for my kid, it's not good enough for your kid. And I'm going to give everything I can to fight with every resource I can. To make sure that that does not happen.
Thank you. Um, Danielle, you're up.
I don't think, um, Ms. Welch, that is even, it's not a possibility, uh, in my just form of of thought or just living here on earth. If they decide to go um with what we have, we don't have enough um to be able to be successful in any realm with any of these vacancies every day. Um, uh, either a teacher is resigning uh to go to another district because they're being paid more or a teacher just decides, I don't, I I can't do this anymore. And provide for my family. Um, so every single uh day, probably eighteen hours of the out of the day, I'm looking for who wants to. Um, help uh support children, who wants to teach. Um, so no, I don't, I don't, there is no way that we do it uh without. The educators that we have now. There's no way uh that it is even fathomable to think that we would be able to move. Into this school year with all of the transitions uh that we've had without the proper amount of educators. If so, then hey, I I don't mind. I'm back in the classroom, uh, absolutely. Uh, and we're pulling on who or what we can. That really has a love and a passion for children to go back because there is no way that we do it without teachers, which is why it is vitally important. That people, please take note and into consideration what it's like to be in the classroom, the things that you need. Uh, in order to survive, not just as a person, but to be responsible for twenty to twenty-three to twenty-five other little lives. Um, and they're in your hands needing for you to educate them and to empower them and to make them feel great and feel special. And for a child to not have that opportunity will fail as a county. So um, I'm careful that it won't be. And if, um, but it if if it is and we get to that point, then it it definitely is all hands on deck and we're throwing whatever. Resources we can to make sure that that isn't, isn't a reality.
Thank you. Um, Ally Marie, you're up.
That would be extremely detrimental to our district. Um, not just our district, but our our students and our parents. If you want to see a mass exodus from public school. That will cause that. Um, I, I can't even fathom that that occurring. I, I just don't see how. That would even be on the table. Uh, we already are struggling with a teacher, the teacher, student, uh, teacher to student ratio being as high as it is now. I mean, I couldn't imagine them foregoing, filling the nine hundred vacancies that we currently have due to firing from the beginning of the of. I believe it was two years ago or a year ago, um, that that we're seeing and not being able to figure out why our teachers are leaving in the first place. Um, well, well not, we won't be able to figure out why, you know, how to retain them. Um, but also we should, we really need to invest in um like a teacher apprenticeship kind of. Um, program here in Hillsborough County so that our students that are going to our schools have the passion to teach when they graduate. Um, going into college and they come back in, start to teach in their, their community schools. I think that that is very important to, to. Understand and to have in our schools, uh, in our districts. I, I'm very shocked about if that's even on the table. Uh, we won't survive that.
Thank you guys. Alright, we're going to start with Damaris next this time, um, or on question four. What steps would you take to increase resources for marginalized youth in H C P S? And prevent school from becoming a gateway to student involvement in the criminal justice system?
Sorry, you, that is a really depressing question that you just stopped us on because those of us who've been in the trenches for a very long time know that. That's where we're headed. And so, um, and I, I think that goes back to our marginalized communities, right? Like, uh, they're the ones that are hit hardest and they're the ones that are hit first, right? And that, and that's what kills me about this is that this is just not acceptable. We, we cannot keep setting students up to fail. We cannot keep getting, giving students our leftovers and that is what we have been historically doing in Florida for the last twenty years. And and we have just set them aside. And because we're not getting the funding, because we're not getting the resources we need. We have to do everything we can to look towards community partners, to partner with churches, to a partner, partner with faith organizations. To partner with community organizations, to do everything, uh, Boys and Girls Club, everything we can to lift up our students. To take and to encourage as our our P T As that are at schools that don't struggle with getting volunteers or don't struggle with getting funding. To adopt another school and to partner with them and to to share their resources with them. Because we have to focus on lifting everyone up and not just some of us up. Um, and and as far as the school to prison pipeline goes, I, I, I think we need to create policy around that. We really need to be looking at. What are we real, are are our restorative justice practices consistent? Or are they just being offered here and there? Um, but are they consistently being offered to our students? Are we really tracking how we are suspending and and having our discipline policies? Or are they being implemented equally throughout our school district? Um, as a, as a parent, I could say probably not, right? And so I think we need to be watching those things. And I, I think we also can, can partner pe- with people who work in the criminal justice system. Right to to, to teach kids. There, there was this great program this summer that had officers come in and 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 talk to kids about gun safety. And all of these things. And I think, I think we need to do more of that and empowering people in the communities. I- in in their community to say, this is what we need, right? To not me walk in and say, oh, I think this is what you need, but you're the one that lives in the community. You tell me what you need. You tell me what I can do to support you. In supporting your students and supporting your community and that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you. Danielle, you're up.
Uh, the first step in resolving this, especially um how behavior leads uh to the prison pipeline. Is foremost understanding, um, making sure that teachers are properly uh trained in understanding what culturally. It looks like for a student to act out versus behaviorally because some things that um teachers I've seen. Um, say that a student has done or is doing wrong, isn't necessarily a behavior problem, but just an adaptation problem that they need. More understanding either on a teacher's side or a student's side and therefore building those family um partnerships, definitely understanding. What it is to have restorative justice and restorative practices. Everything isn't a, an immediate suspension or immediate sus- referral. It's that we've lost our level of grace and understanding and awareness and really um knowing that a teacher is also a mentor. Um, not just supposed to lead to direct punishment. Um, me being in administration, definitely there are. Times and situations that you occur that, you know, okay, what, do I go this way? Do I go that way? But it's always with the thought process of if this is the response, how does this affect the child? Not just today, but tomorrow. And the next week, what will they think about education or the educational environment based upon how they were treated or a discipline that they were given? So understanding um that there should be some awareness and care given when we uh give a child some form of expulsion or discipline. Of any format that we should be, um, as um Damaris said, it should be with, with a level that everybody's using the same tool to measure. Um, how suspensions and referrals go and it shouldn't be so top heavy in other places and then so low in other places, especially for the same offenses. So definitely making sure that there is understanding um with teachers, families, uh, as well as administration and awareness of the different practices. That you can implement so that it doesn't go straight there. A lot of um our pipeline also starts with these third grade reading scores. So actually understanding that we have um equipped and qualified people to be able to teach students with disabilities or students who don't. Who are not atypical learners, um, that need different um of variety of learning tools to be able to learn. It's not necessarily that they can, they just need other options. So making sure that we are open and broad in our approach. Of how we handle discipline as well as our training uh and development of educators to be able to support students. Of all varying types.
Thank you. Ally Marie, your turn.
Could you repeat the question for me?
Yes, ma'am. Um, what steps would you take to increase resources for marginalized youth in H C P S? And prevent school from becoming a gateway to student involvement in the criminal justice system?
Okay, so there, we all know that there's about three, I say four things that make schools successful and that's parental involvement. And we can't force parents to be involved, but we can incentivize um whatever that looks like for whatever school that they're in. We have to figure out how to leverage that um to get more parents involved. We need consistent teachers, which we don't have. The turnaround is about three to five years. Um, eleven the most. Uh, so we need to figure out how we can retain our teachers. Um, but also supportive administration, which as we know is, is a struggling factor. Um, many teachers that I have spoken to over the last year, being a filed candidate and as a parent over the last several years. Um, our teachers don't feel like they're supported by their administration, but also the missing factor there is community involvement. We need to make sure that our communities are plugged into their schools and giving them the resources that they need from the community also. Not just from the state and not just from um the, the, the federal government. We have to make sure that our communities are involved. Uh, when it comes to discipline, we need to make sure there's equal application to the discipline policies. But we also have different schools that are going to operate differently because of the needs and because of the demographics of the, of the students. So we need to make sure that most times that it is on an individual basis, a case to case basis, because not every case is going to be the same. Not every child learns the same. Not every child is going to be disciplined the same. Not every child is going to react to discipline the same. I know, I have five and they're all very different. Um, so those are some things that I would do and definitely make sure that our students understand the art of communication, that our teachers understand the art of communication. Um, and de-escalation tactics. We need to make sure our kids understand that fighting is not the first, it should not be the first response. We need to figure out how we can show them, you know, their, their actions lead to reactions. And most times it can be detrimental to them themselves or to the other person. And that is what leads to, you know, children, you know. Getting into trouble outside of school. If they don't have a respect for authority at home, then they're not going to have respect for authority in a classroom. And if they don't have respect for authority in the classroom, then they're not going to have respect for authority outside of the classroom. So we have to make sure that we're teaching them de-escalation tactics and um communication, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Hunter?
This is a multifaceted problem that we have here in Hillsborough County schools, but one of the main um issues that we see with. And and the teaching force, the teachers leaving is because of, of discipline not being addressed at their school level or they're not being supported by their administrators. But the flip side to that or devil's advocate to that is, is Addison Davis sometimes walks around and plucks our administrators out randomly and puts them at other schools when we have issues. Um, our administrators aren't supported. Uh, if a school's at a crisis point, the first reaction shouldn't be, let's pull the principal and put someone new in there. Because that does not encourage confidence in the principal. It doesn't encourage confidence in the parents or the faculty that's left there or really the students. The students can see right through that. Um, so what we need to do is share our resources. If a principal's having a hard time with discipline at a school, let's put some additional resources in there. Maybe an additional A P to help with some of those, those difficult decisions. Uh, our teachers shouldn't be worried about discipline. They should be worried about teaching. And so we need to turn that back around. Restore, as far as restorative justice goes, we need to have equitable rules across the board. Um, when I was in high school, I remember an A P, um, his name was John Copeland and he had a matrix. And if you, if you did something wrong, he, he counted the number of times you did it and that was the number, it was based on a matrix and all this punishment and everything like that. It was a very well crafted system because everyone was treated absolutely um the same. And the, we have to raise our expectations too. And put the resources where they're needed. So we need to go school by school and family by family, flip the schools upside down where our children are having problems, where our children have discipline issues. And see if we can't support, um, if we can't support them with different things like M T S S support. Or exceptional education support or any type of support that that family needs, but we have to do it community by community, school by school. And we have to put resources where they're needed and plan with a purpose. Everything shouldn't be just based on student size because the students in South Tampa. Um, are different than the students in Eastern Hillsborough County. And and so we need to, we need to allocate our resources where they're actually needed.
Thank you. Alright, so we're moving on to question five. Ally Marie, you're up first this time. Uh, what schools have you visited or volunteered at in the last four years?
So when I was reading the candidate handbook, I was told that um as a candidate, I could not visit schools. I had tried and I was told no. So I have not visited um any of our public schools because you can't campaign on, on a public school property. Um, so I have not um visited in, in the way, the capacity that I would like to visit schools. However, I have spoken to several teachers around the county and and they have been a huge help for me. Um, I've, I've also worked with several charters. I've worked with several uh private schools, uh, their teachers through programs like Fama Faith Action. Action Ministry Alliance, um, uh, through several other, other uh grassroots programs. So, um, yeah, that's what I've been able to do.
Thank you. Hunter?
It'd be hard to count in the last four years how many schools I've been to, but i- in my job in in um Hillsborough County, the last job I had with the migrant education, we went all over. Uh, and transportation as well. We went to almost every school, not just in District Four, but um, um, all over when we talked about funding and transportation funding. Um, I've also volunteered at, um, I've been on the P T O board of my daughter's school. Uh, she's now going into first grade. So I've been on the P T O board for one year. And before that, I was at all the forty-six schools in the Chula Vista Elementary School District, um, as we were out in California.
Thank you. Uh, Damaris?
All of them? Um, that's not really hyperbole. It's because of the work uh with uh P T A that I was able to go out and visit to all of our. All of our schools, um, at least once, sometimes uh significantly more than that. Over the last year, I've probably spent more time in, in my child's school, um, and between. And and also um my child's former school. Um, and so, yeah. Uh, there may be a handful of schools that I have not visited at least once, but, but pretty much all the schools in Hillsborough County.
Thank you. Um, Danielle?
I can't say all of them, uh, Damaris, but a vast majority, uh, if they're just for a um site visit or tour. To see what they're doing differently or new, especially um with avid um classes, especially in elementary has been um. A newfound passion of mine, um, but definitely charter schools as well have been on um my ticket to hit in the district. So a vast majority of public was just at Franklin um this week for um active shooter training. So, uh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Right, did I get every, no, I didn't. Did I get everybody? I think I got everybody. I'm, I'm, I'm getting out of where I'm like, I've got lots of stars here trying to keep track. You can, you can correct me if I, I mess up, okay? Um, Hunter is next. He's first. His next question. Uh, the district has paid for a report regarding underutilized schools. If the report comes back and shows that certain schools in minority communities should be repurposed. Would you support the repurposing of the school facilities for community use?
Absolutely, provided that we look at everything. It cannot just be a, a number of cheeks in a seat. We also have to look at. Um, other factors that really influence parents' decision-making and that includes transportation services. So it's not going to be equitable for us to close down a school in a, in a majority minority community and then bust the kids somewhere else. You know what I mean? We, we don't want to do that. We want kids to stay at their neighborhood schools. Now, with that said, we see that operationally, um, some schools are underutilized. And I would love to see those turned back in, over to the community and repurposed for various things, including maybe adult education classes in those communities. Or even working with our county commissioners and seeing if we can't do some affordable housing for teachers or um. Uh, low income families in our communities. I would love to see some of those things happen.
Thank you. Uh, Damaris?
Uh, absolutely. In fact, I was just talking to someone about that this morning, that what, what would the best use? Because I know that we have a lot of communities that don't have community senators, that don't have adequate um V P K, that don't have access to places that people can meet. But I also think we need to be very, like Hunter said, very mindful of, of not putting a kid on a bus and making them ride for half of their day. I, I, I know I was bussed when I was a Hillsborough County Public School student.
I I I know I was bussed when I was a Hillsborough County Public School student, and there were some days where we spent forty-five minutes on a bus in the morning. And I didn't like that, my mom didn't like that, and you know, no one really liked that. So we we can't do that to our kids. But I think that we can can really get engaged with the community, we can't do this in a vacuum, right? We have to find out what the community needs, what what do they want, what are they looking for, and then really meet their needs where where they are when we do this repurposing.
Thank you. Danielle?
Yes, absolutely. But as they stated before, I I was I was at Lithia Springs Elementary School is where my elementary was. And students at that time, because they had done the the rebounder of Hillsborough County and they bused students forty-five, thirty, fifty minutes from the city all the way out to Lithia, which was arduous. And parents weren't able to get there. So seeing and knowing what that was like, and my mom was an educator at that school, the hardship that was endured from parents and families because of that, that should never happen again. So I am a firm advocate for community schools. So definitely, even if that close knit walking distance might be close, it still needs to be a school within distance to the family. So they're able to be able to get to school, to be able to have involvement and be near their children. But if we can repurpose it, I would always maintain that it still needs to remain a center for education in some purpose. That the community is still able to go there and it still is a beacon of light for that area.
Thank you. Ally Marie?
Great, yes, to just basically echo everything everyone else has said. This, yes, I think that if we are to consolidate schools, we need to be very careful and very delicate with how that process and what that process looks like. We need to make sure that if we are going to repurpose it, it's for the community use. And that it 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 will have some kind of educational basis for that community. And I don't believe that busing children across the county makes sense. We have to make sure that if we are closing the school, the resources are going to be allocated to where it needs to go. But also that that it makes sense for that community as well. We don't want to leave anybody out without without, you know, a school that they can go to. That's close by for them, so.
Thank you. Danielle, you're first up this time. Here's your question. What are your thoughts about using technology in the classroom, particularly programs like iReady or Achieve Three Thousand? Does your opinion change now that Florida has a new progress monitoring system that is computer-based?
Whether it's Achieve Three Thousand or iReady, MobiMax, whatever, educational platform technology-wise that a school or a district chooses to use is beneficial. We're in a technology age. There is, it doesn't make sense to not equip children with how to use technology in an educational way, especially with all the tests now. Even kindergartners will be tested on a computer. So if they're being tested on a computer, why don't they have the practice to be able to engage different levels of learning through technology, through the use of iReady, or as you said, Achieve Three Thousand, the platforms? If you were to ask a teacher, they would tell you the majority of them do work in context. It's just how the teacher chooses using, how the student chooses to use it, and how the parent or family chooses to use it. So you definitely have to make sure that it benefits your school body as a whole and definitely fits the child. But completely taking it away makes absolutely no sense. We definitely need to make sure that our children are prepared to be leaders of tomorrow. They cannot, if they do not know or are aware of that technology can be used for something more than TikTok or Instagram. They need to know that they can embrace technology in a way that elevates them and grows them.
Thank you. Ally Marie, you're next.
Yeah, so to reiterate, we are in a technological age and our children do need to know how to function with technology. However, I don't think it needs to be the first and foremost thing or the most important thing that we're using to educate our kids. They need to know how to write and use their hands, because when you write and you use your hand, there's something that happens with your synapse in your brain that helps you retain the information a little bit more. So I think that doing it in conjunction, which is already happening, is important, but not leaning so so much on it, I think is also important. We have to make sure that our kids know, you know, technology, but that they do, that they are able to take a break from it. And I know most, there are some children that don't learn very well through the screen, and there are some children that 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 do. So we need to make sure that it's individual based as well, and it's not just, it's it's not just a mandate for each student. Because each student learns differently. There isn't one size fits all in education.
Thank you. Hunter, you're next.
Again, I agree with the sentiments that have been shared before. The progress monitoring is a great tool and it's, I'm I'm actually really encouraged to see this coming out of Tallahassee, that we're going to use progress monitoring now. Unfortunately, I believe the vendor that the state chose to use the progress monitoring with is only going to give us raw data scores. And it won't give teachers the component that some of the other things like iReady and Achieve Three Thousand give us, which is where the students are, where we're finding deficiencies at. And now the district has purchased those technology softwares to to do this progress monitoring tools. They're they're going to make it optional now for schools. And I think that's that's a terrible idea, because A, you've invested all this money, so you've taken the taxpayer money and paid for the software, let's start using it. And B, why didn't we push back a little more and ask the state if we could use our own thing? We did that during E E T. We pushed back and said, can we use our own model? Why didn't we do the same thing here since we've already paid for it? Let's let's be the pilot district here. But we have to also plan our technology with a purpose. It should be a tool. It should not be the thing that we're sticking kids in front of to teach them, because nothing can replace a a great teacher in a classroom.
Thank you. Demarest?
First, Hunter, to put your mind at ease, we did push back on that, on the legislature with this issue. And so the district was absolutely involved pushing back to be able to help guide how that testing system would go. But in addition to that, I think technology, like was said before, is a tool. It definitely should not be the priority. What I'm really concerned about is that our our students spend enormous amounts of time consuming technology as opposed to learning how to create on technology. And so if we're really talking about preparing them for life or preparing them for the future, we need to give our students opportunity to create. Because that's where where the jobs and where the 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 demand will be in the future. It's not going to be, oh, can you read this paragraph on the computer and highlight the main points? It's going to be, can you create a program that does that does these things? And so I think we need to do a better job of giving our kids opportunity to do that. In addition, I've said many times that if my kids were in elementary school today, they would be forced to be in front of a computer more than I ever allowed them to be have screen time in their lives. Because we prioritize reading physical books and things like that in my house. And so I think that we need to have the flexibility as parents and families to say, we're not, we're not willing to let our child spend an hour and a half on iReady because we sit and count M and Ms and practice our math that way. Or we sit in front and hold books and turn them together and read together. And we need to have that flexibility as a parent to use the tool that works best in our house at home.
Thank you. All right, Ally, you are next up first. So we're going to go on to the next question, number eight. What are your thoughts on hazardous walking conditions that prevent students from getting to school safely? What can the district do about it? And is it time to extend courtesy busing within a two-mile radius of a school?
Yes, to the last question. And I think as a board member, we should be able to leverage the relationships that we have with our sitting city council, not city council, sorry. Well, them too, but our Board of County Commission, because Board of County Commission is really, are really the ones that are in charge of making sure that our children have safe sidewalks to walk to school. It is very disheartening to see and to know that that is not the case. And we need to to definitely advocate more for that, and that's something that I am willing to do. As I've been an advocate for six years, so I'm ready to get in there and and hold their feet to the fire like I have been doing for the last six years with other issues. So, yes, I I agree that that there needs to be more advocacy and that we should probably look at extending the the bus routes.
Thank you. Hunter?
And I guess the only thing I would say about extending the bus routes or extending courtesy busing is that where we're going to get the money to pay for it. That's that's the first question, I guess. The second question, the second thing I will say about hazardous walking conditions is, when I was in the Transportation Department, I was actually in charge of identifying hazardous walking conditions with our site supervisors. And then working with our jurisdictions to receive state funding for those. Because if you if you don't understand hazardous walking conditions, if a road is deemed hazardous, we, the district gets funding if we transport students in grades K through five. The district does not get funding for sixth through twelfth grade students that are, have to walk along a hazardous roadway. But what we did was we, we basically sent a checklist over to the local agency, the agency checked it, and we submitted it up to the state for for review and and funding. And but what the checklist was supposed to do and what the statutes are supposed to do is, we're supposed to identify these hazardous walkways and then work with our local agencies to reduce the hazard. That's that's the whole idea. And that's the piece that we're not doing right now. As Ally said, we're not working with our local governments and correcting those hazards, and that's what we really need to be doing.
Thank you. Demarest, your turn.
I would echo what everyone else just said about, you know, funding is a huge issue. This is legislated, the two miles is legislated. That is not something that a school, a decision that a school district makes. Identifying the hazardous conditions, working with our, not only the Board of County Commissioners, the City Council, which by the way, the City Council, I think it's like one block of sidewalk a year, is what the what the allocation is for that. But also to work with advocacy groups. There are great advocacy groups that have started around helping kids have safe pathways, walking to school, right? Out of Roosevelt, Emily Hinsdale had sidewalk stompers. And so she she does that. One of our community schools, Gibsonton, noticed that the kids weren't walking to school, coming to school on time. And they found out it was because they didn't have streetlights to light the way. And so they advocated for street lamps with the Board of County Commissioners, and they were able to get street lamps. So we need to work together in this. We can't, it can't be just one board member taking it on or one district staff taking it on. We have to say, oh, thi- this is an issue, and let's go go and tackle this together. And we need to bring as many voices to the issue as possible.
Thank you. Danielle?
I agree, definitely working with our community officials and building partnerships also with our police department and those that are responsible for walkways and transportation and accidents. I know the the way that I take to work every day, coming from Lithia, turning on Fishhawk, and I'm passing Newsome. And there is a McDonald's and a Dunkin' Donuts, and there are kids coming from out of the Dunkin' Donuts and the McDonald's going across to the high school. Likewise, there are kids going to Rogers Middle School, and that, it does not appear to be hazardous. But it is extremely, to me, unsafe, just looking at how quickly somebody can get nicked or hurt while students are walking or biking. So making sure that it's, and it is heavily lit with not just signs, but people, and there are still the potentiality for an accident to occur. So then making sure that we have more people at crosswalks, more police officials that people can actually see so that they are readily able to stop without just making sure that we have sidewalk stays, but also making sure that we have the personnel there to ensure and advocate further for safety.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to our next question. Hunter, you're up first. Still here, okay. P T A has resolutions that support LGBTQ plus youth. How can your, our district do a better job of supporting LGBTQ plus youth?
Well, what we need to do is bring the the issues of LGBTQ youth to to the forefront, and we need to talk about it. And we need to have conversations with our community, and we need to have them with our educators too, and see what we can do in the classroom to support our students, every student. I mean, every student has a right to come in and feel like they're not being judged, and that they can sit down here and have appropriate education. That's what every student deserves in Hillsborough County. And so our job as the board is, has to be to make sure that everyone has the right to come to school and do that. And that's that's what our job as board members are, is to make sure that everyone has that right.
Thank you. Demarest?
So we actually do a pretty good job of 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 protecting our LGBTQ plus students in Hillsborough County. The Equality Florida has has met with the Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. They have a Safe Schools Guide, they have, that they can do training for teachers and things like that. We have a lot of G S As or Gray Straight Alliances at a lot of our schools, especially middle school and high schools. I think the concern is moving forward that there is some really ambiguous language in a bill that passed last last session that makes it really hard to find a way to navigate. And so we're really seeing, you know, Orange County took a really extreme approach to being cautious with this bill where they removed safe spaces stickers and things like that from their schools. And and so I think we need to just be very diligent in protecting our students' right to learn in a safe and welcoming and affirming environment, especially considering this bill that has has been passed that that really does have very, very ambiguous language, because it just says age appropriate, and that's up to the Department of Education to decide. So, you know, in Orange County, they can't have pictures of spouses at all on their desks and things like that. And so we need to, we need to just be diligent to make sure that our students and that we don't have that really, really drastic interpretation of the legislation it put in place here.
Thank you. Danielle, your turn.
Can you please restate the question?
Yes ma'am. P T A has resolutions that support LGBTQ plus youth. How can our district do a better job of supporting LGBTQ plus youth?
Thank, I think they're off to a good start. As Demarest said, there are signs that maybe a parent or outsider wouldn't know, but students are very well aware that teachers or administration or staff do have like these very, very small stickers that say safe space, which I believe should be for all children. We are here to provide safe spaces and safe environments. I think having those moments of notation where they are recognized, they are in some level understood, and there is a place where they're able to be safe regardless of what their preferences or choices might be. There still should be a provided safe area. I think Hillsborough County, as I stated, as far as, even with safe bathroom training, it's just all about understanding and knowledge of staff as well as communicating that to parents as well and knowing what the different, we'll we'll say, access points and boundaries are specifically as it speaks to this bill. So that way, teachers, administration are doing the things that they should do in an appropriate manner as well as parents aware, are aware of what a teacher or a student or a guidance counselor might be aware of and how they might be able to support. So I think they're off to a decent start. Do some things need to to be changed or revised or looked at differently? That that's on a school by school and the case by case synopsis, but overall, they do have have a plan and place and procedure. I don't know how that will change based upon the bill, but it definitely always needs to be inclusive or or understanding that all students need a safe space.
Thank you so much. Ally Marie, you're up.
I agree. All students need to make sure and feel like they are in a safe environment when they are at school, because they're at school to learn. And they're at school to learn the basics and to, you know, be ready for life after school and to go, whether they're going into the workforce or they're going, you know, directly into college. All of that is is detrimental to a child. So you need, we need to make sure that, I mean, important to a child, so we need to make sure that they they, everybody does feel safe regardless of what their preferences are. But also educating families that do come with concerns or or that have concerns about the safety for their children based on on, you know, their their LGBTQ status or what have you. And I do think that that our school district is is doing, doing okay with that. If there does need to be improvements, then we need to be able to speak with our students and their families and ask, you know, what else is there that we can do to provide this for you? But it should be for everyone as well. So we need to make sure, like I said, that every child and every student feels safe when they walk into the doors of a school.
Thank you. All right, we're coming up on our last question. I know, it seems like we've been doing this and I didn't think we were going to get through all of them, and I'm really impressed that we did. So, thank you all. Demarest, you are up first on our last question. What are your thoughts on the books that are accessible to students at schools and what processes or policies would you like to see the district implement?
So we, you know, I think some of it went away with the, because I had a hard time finding it, the the process to challenge books was difficult to find after the switching of the website, is my understanding. So we do have a process to challenge books that we are concerned about. In addition to that, I know that when my kids had a classroom library in their class, the teacher sent home a permission slip saying, these, this content is in your child's library. I I just want you to make sure, I want to make sure that you're okay with them having access to that content. I I get really concerned when we talk. Um, I, I get really concerned when we talk about, um, taking books out of the classroom or the ability to have, for teachers to have books in the classroom. A lot of our students don't have access to books at home. They don't have access to libraries, especially when they get in high school. It's really hard to go to the library to check out books. And I want, uh, it's very, very important to me that kids graduate and love reading. And so I think it's really important to recognize that they need to have access to books in order to love reading. In addition to that, I'm also really concerned that, that the, um, that, that, that there is the chance that we could lose our AP accreditation if we start to ban books. And that, that is something that has been made clear that if we start to limit what our children can read, um, that that's an issue. Now, that being said, as a parent, I read the books my kids read. Parents have always had access to the books. They have always, they always have the ability to read them and say, this isn't okay for my kid. My, my 12-year-old took a, a college class in, in, and it was an English lit class when he was 12. And I had the, I had to make the decision, is my child ready for that class? Is my child ready for that content? That was a decision I made with my child. No one made the decision to take the access to those great books away from him. That, that was something we had to decide together. And so I think we really need to be cautious. History never looks favorably on societies that start banning books or pulling books for any reasons. But then we also need to empower parents to understand what their kids reading and to know what their kids reading, um, as well.
Yeah, Danielle.
It definitely is, um, not just, um, a child who is underage's, uh, choice of, of what to read, but it is the family. Uh, and I think every family should have, uh, the choice and the space to be able to say, this isn't appropriate, um, for my kid. That's not just to say that it might not be appropriate to the student, um, sitting next to them. If it's okay for their family, then it's okay for their family. But if it's not for your house, then it's not for your house. Um, and I think those considerations definitely should be considered, uh, before we do something that's completely broad stroke for everyone, um, and it's not specific or detailed for the person. There is a procedure, um, as the mayor stated, in, in every school for a parent to, um, challenge or have a question, um, about a book. And then that be dealt with on that case by case. But when we, um, begin to just holistically downsize thought and thinking, then where will that, that lead us as a society and as people? Because we grow by our metacognition, that's what makes us human. We can think about our thinking. So in that, I think that the choice, uh, should be on the family to think and to do what is best, um, for their child and allowing them, uh, access to the materials that fit them best, um, for the education that the parent would allow and wants for their child have.
Thank you. Ellie Marie.
Thank you so much for this question. So I have been on several committees, um, citizen-run grassroots committees that have been a part of, of finding, we found, um, over, I believe, 200 sexually explicit. That's like pornography, right? Like if there's pictures of children in sex acts, they vividly explain, uh, in full-blown detail rape and incest, to include fisting. These kinds of things are the books that are being challenged, um, at our school board meetings twice a month for the last 18 months. They violate federal state, they violate federal law as a felony to have obscenities like this in our schools. It is also, um, violating Florida obscenity laws. So it is not about banning the book. It is about removing the access that our children have to these books because they don't need to see this. They really don't. It's a picture of two children giving each other a blowjob. I'm sorry, that is not okay at any grade level. Um, and when you're using words like the PUSSY word and things of that nature for these books, that is not educational unless you're trying to teach a child how to sex. Um, and that is where my issue comes in. And I believe that every parent would be concerned that their children have access to books like that. But as far as making sure we do have a well-rounded, um, educational, um, educational books for our children that help them critically think, um, and that are expanding their minds so that they're able to, to learn philosophy and they're able to, you know, um, learn different styles of writing and go back to, you know, reading like Socrates and things like this and, and, uh, uh, Shakespeare and all of those wonderful writers of, of our time, the Renaissance era and all of those, that stuff is important as well. So we need to make sure that, yes, our parents, uh, always have had the access, but to just reiterate that they do have the access and where to find it. Um, as far as the process of banning the books, we have went through the process to get some of these books, not banned, but looked at, um, and removed access to. We have gone through the process and they are 83, 84 days behind process. Uh, it's supposed to be a seven-day window where you go, you report the book. In seven days, they're supposed to create the committee and after 30 days, um, they come back and tell you what they found. It's been 83 days and that has not happened through our district. And to, to have a psychologist that sits on the board who's, who specializes in trauma, you would think this would be something that they would champion. And it hasn't happened in 18 months. It's an issue. So it's not about banning the books, it's about removing access.
Thank you. Hunter, you're up.
Um, as, as been mentioned before, I'm also not in favor of, of banning books outright, uh, district-wide or, uh, removing access district-wide because our communities are different. I mean, what we see in Plant City is very different than the values that we see in West Tampa or South Tampa. So it should be a community-based decision at the school level of whether or not, um, books are going to be held behind the school library. That library, and that's what we do over in Pope County right now. Any book that's challenged or anything or found to be, have some questionable material by a group of parents, it's just put behind the, um, the librarian. And if a student wants to check it out, a parent has to give permission beforehand. I'm all about encouraging parents to get more involved and soon, including parents that have a problem with some of the books in our schools. Uh, we've, we've lamented for years, decades, um, as educators that our parents weren't involved. And now we can't start turning parents away, um, because of what they choose to be involved in. So like the mayor said, that the situation, the, the current process that's in place of allowing every, uh, parent to challenge material that's in their school and then having that review done at the local level, that, that's what we need to have. And, and I think what we have in place is good enough.
Thank you. All right. We are out of questions and I wanted to thank all of you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Um, we appreciate you sharing your, your, uh, your thoughts and ideas with our, our viewers and our membership. And we hope everybody had some questions answered and maybe, uh, sparked some, some other questions. And please reach out to any of the candidates through their, uh, websites. We also want to give you guys a chance to make a closing statements for our viewers to watch in our live stream. We're going to, um, we'll edit those and put it on our YouTube channel as well. So, um, we'll have it in two spots. So we will start, uh, let's see, who do we, who do we, so, so I guess. Oh my God, Danielle. Danielle, we'll let you go first and we'll go Danielle, Ellie Marie, Hunter and Damaris. And we'll let you just say what you'd like to say to get about a minute and a half and go for it. So Danielle, you're up first. Thanks very much.
Pleasure. Uh, thank you, uh, for having us. We greatly appreciate it. I know I did, I had a good time. We love conversations, so please, uh, head over to, um, DanielleForBetterSchools.com and find out more information about what we're doing, the work that we intend to do. Should we be a part of the Hillsborough County School Board? I will be in a city near you if I'm not already. Uh, so please reach out with your questions. We're definitely, uh, able to give you an answer. I am, um, more than excited about the opportunity to not just help students, but to empower families, uh, to be better, to live better and to work better within our community here in Hillsborough. So, thank you.
Ellie, your turn.
Thank you guys so very much for having this forum. I really enjoyed myself. I love having these conversations, even the difficult questions. I welcome them all. That's why I give my phone number out like it's candy. Uh, surprisingly, I haven't had many people call me. My phone number is 813-699-0695. If you have any questions, and I mean literally any, any questions that you want to bring to me or any concerns you want to bring to me, um, please come, call me. I'll meet you anywhere. I'll meet with anyone and we can hash it out, talk it out. What I want to do is be solutionary. We have to work together because education is the great equalizer. It, it affects everybody in our county, black, white, brown, all demographics, all, um, educational backgrounds, all, you know, financial situations. Education is important throughout this entire county. So we need to make sure that we are working together and that is something that I will strive to do. And I will do the very best I can, sitting on the board, being a true representative of the people. But in order to do that, you have to work with the people that you serve. Um, and that's something that service is a part of my heart. I've been doing it for a long time. Um, and having babies, you know, five of them, it's, it's very important that they are educated properly and that their peers are educated, um, as well. So again, I welcome all phone calls. Uh, you can visit votealimarieleg.com. That's, uh, leg is L-E-G-G-E, uh, dot com. Thank you guys so very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Hunter?
I would also like to thank the Hillsborough County PTA for having this conversation tonight. It's great. Half the battle, um, of any school board member is really showing up and listening. And I'd like to thank Danielle for showing up tonight. And, uh, the rest of the candidates for also showing up tonight. I wish we could have heard from everyone, but sometimes that's just not the way that the cookie crumbles. If you do have any questions at all for me, my number is 813-763-1889. You can also visit my website, huntergambrill.com to learn more about why the teachers union. And also the Tampa Bay Times endorsed my candidacy for this, uh, this race. Uh, my message is simple. I just want to remove politics out of education and get back to the basics of educating our children. I want to make our schools shine and I want to make our schools be the center point, not Addison Davis, not any school board member. We should be the backseats and our schools should be the front seats. If we had that mentality going into Millage referendums or this election, it would have, it would have flown off the, the Tampa Bay Times would have endorsed it 100%. But because we didn't have our schools out there face forward and pushing this initiative on new things, like how many art teachers they're going to get and everything like that, that, that's why we're seeing some of these issues that, um, with the impasse and everything like that. Anyway, huntergambrill.com, 813-763-1889. I'd love to talk to you and I'd love to get your support on August 23rd. Thanks.
Thank you, Hunter. Uh, Damaris, your last.
Thank you so much, uh, again for doing this. It is a little odd being on this side of the camera. I am so grateful for, uh, HCCPTA and PTA in general because that's how I got my start was just being a parent that was engaged and involved and wanted a better future and for my kids and all kids. And I started showing up and I haven't stopped over a decade later. I am always in the community. I am always engaged. I am always giving out my phone number, which I will do again, which most everyone has because I've done it at literally every meeting I've ever been to for PTA. It's 813-843-6210. I have skin in the game. My kids attend public schools. My kids have always attended public schools and they have thrived because I have been an engaged and involved parent and they have been very fortunate. And I want that for all of our kids. And that is why I'm running for school board because I know that our kids can get an incredible education in our public schools if we're willing to invest, if we're willing to get engaged, if we're willing to get involved. Again, you can check out my website at damarisallen.com, uh, and, and please, I'd love to have your support on August 23rd. Thanks.
Thank you guys. Thank you everyone for participating. Um, I did forget to explain something at the beginning, which I was just reminded of. We did have to shut off our commenting on, on our Facebook, uh, for a little while. We had spammer, spamming, um, links on our, in our comment threads. So just to, if anybody has any questions or has any feedback, you are more than welcome to email, um, me, uh, president@hccptaptsa.org. Anything, um, that you, I can pass on or answer for you, I'm happy to do that. But that is why there are no comments. I do apologize for that. Uh, it happened literally right before this all started. So, um, I would also like to take a moment to plug our PTAs and our PTSAs. It will be having their open houses next week. We're going into a really hard year. Every single member matters. Even if you can just join to join, you don't have to volunteer, stay connected, be a part, you know, just be part of that conversation. Know what's happening in your school. Um, every single one of those PTA leaders out there, PTSA leaders, they need your support. So if it, you know, if you can, uh, join, please join. That is, that is my ask tonight. And again, thank you all for being here and, um, uh, I will talk to y'all soon. Thank you guys.